I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the room?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass. Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise and wave the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purposes. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. And we will open and end with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. We are very excited to welcome our students and staff back for in-person instruction this week. As I previously reported, the Department of Health changed their quarantine guidelines to allow students and staff who are no longer symptomatic of COVID to return to school on what had been their sixth day of quarantine. Our nursing department coordinated a centralized screening center right here at our administration building. As we continue to transition next week, those students wishing to return between six and 10 days of their quarantine will be screened at their school building by their school nurse. And I'll say that one more time. Students wishing to return between their days six and 10 of their quarantine will be screened at their school building by their nurse next week. Parents should communicate directly with their school nurse for specific information and requirements regarding student reentry screening after five full days of quarantine. Students around the district have been working in their social studies classes to learn about friendship, bringing peace to their communities, and natural resources. They've also been building Lenape longhouses and wigwams and learning about the holidays we celebrate in our community and the nation. And in sports, wow, we've got some stuff to talk about in sports. Mackenzie Keane is the individual GMC champion for girls bowling. Frankie Distall is the GMC first-place winner in the 132-pound weight class in girls wrestling. Paige, yep. Paige Miklich, Lauren Mathis, Michaela Black, Anna Swicki won the girls shuttle hurdles in the Group Four Relays and set a new school record. Yep, we can pop. Arianna McSweeney tied the school pole ball record at nine feet, six inches. And I get afraid on a ladder at nine feet, six inches. Due to midterms, January 28th and January 31st, February 2nd, February 3rd will be single-session days for East Brunswick High School and Churchill Junior High School only. Just a reminder, Tuesday, February 1st is a professional development day for all staff. No school for students. And tonight, concluding the superintendent's report, Mr. Giuliano will provide updates on a couple of very important district initiatives. Mr. Giuliano?
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. So first, the stadium field replacement update. Late today, I received the settlement from our insurance folks, settlement paperwork. They will be paying for the full replacement cost of the field. So we have been working in the meantime with our engineers in putting together what that package looks like. And for the February 3rd board meeting, the next board meeting, we will have a recommendation for contract awards so that we can start moving forward. And that project will be the field replacement and also the track replacement as well, because it's time for the track to be replaced. The insurance company is not paying for the track. There was no damage as a result of the storm for that, but we'll be taking care of that entire package. So that's really good news. I have no timelines at this point to be able to report out, but perhaps by the February 3rd meeting, I'll be able to give you some general timelines as to the project's start and ultimately what the anticipated completion might be. So that's stadium field update. Next, the Churchill TCU update. On tonight's agenda, a late add-in, so I apologize for that, but we were working until the very end of the day today on contract for the temporary classroom units, as well as going through the analysis on the bid opening that took place today. The bid opening was for the site work that needs to take place at Churchill to be able to accommodate the temporary classroom units. Those two items are on the agenda for board action this evening. And what I'd like to share is, I know there have been a lot of questions, curiosity about, what do these temporary classroom units look like? So the company has a short video. It's about a minute and a half long. It's a time-lapse video that goes through the entire process of how these things come onto the site, are put together, and then ultimately what one might look like, what a group of them might look like after they've been assembled. So we're going to show that to you now. So these are not the, I hate calling them trailers. This is not what we envision if we think back to what trailers used to look like 30, 40, 50 years ago. These are actual facilities. And I think that everyone will be satisfied once this project is completed. That is just a representation. It is not exactly what ours will look like, but it's a really good representation.
Can we put that on the website? I think that's really good, because there's a lot of questions out there from parents, especially the alumni that did go to the trailers, which I loved, but these are more modular classrooms.
Right, exactly.
That's great.
Any questions about that at this point?
Any questions?
How many days does it take to put them up?
Well, we'll get a construction schedule. We don't have that at this point. That's one of the things that will be coming. But this will be taking, after they're constructed, then they'll be moved to the site. We'll be having tractor trailers of TCU units being brought to the site, and then they'll have to be assembled. So between the assembly and connections and all the finished work that has to be done, that's going to take some time. Where our target is that, of course, that everything will be done sometime mid-August or so, mid to late August for occupancy in September.
Because I counted 65 days right there.
Well, that was a small facility. So let me put in perspective the footprint of what we're talking about. The footprint of this facility is the equivalent of, let's say, a Warns Dorfer or a Frost school without the back wing. You know, it's 32 classrooms, plus office space, plus restrooms. This is a big facility. That was not a big facility that you just saw on the video. I'll be happy to share, you know, more details once I have them, and we'll certainly be keeping the board updated on that.
Thank you for good news.
I was happy to provide that.
That is good news on both fronts, which is very exciting. Thank you for that. Okay, our resolution of appreciation. Dr. Valesky, would you like to?
I'm going to assume my traditional position out here and address the board, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If I can get my staticy pants to stop clean.
It's not a good look.
It's the only look I've got right now.
Get him some static, Gar.
January is Board Appreciation Month, and so this resolution of appreciation is for the Board of Education, the East Brunswick Board of Education. Whereas the East Brunswick School Boards Association has declared January 2022 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time that all residents might acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education is one of more than 581 local school boards in New Jersey that sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education embraces for all students the goals reflected in the district motto of excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education helps determine community goals for the education of approximately 8,300 students in preschool through 12th grade. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education members receive no compensation for their services, yet are committed and active advocates for public school students and as board members collectively work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the good of East Brunswick Public School District, public education in general. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education provides accountability to the public, communicates the needs of the school district to the public, and conveys to the school administrators the public's expectations for schools. And whereas the East Brunswick Board of Education can take pride in its schools, which rank among the best in New Jersey and nationally in indicators such as high school graduation rates, class size, college entrance exam participation, advanced placement offerings, and test scores. Now therefore be resolved that we join communities statewide in observing January 2022 as School Board Recognition Month and express our gratitude and appreciation to Lori Lacks, Heather Gwass, Vicki Becker, Mark Carrangelo, Susannah Chu, Mark Sizmar, Lee Wu-Hung, Barbara Reese, and Jeffrey Winston collectively, the East Brunswick Board of Education, for their unwavering service to students, staff, and the greater East Brunswick community. And Janet has some certificates for each of you. And I just wanted to say personally, my appreciation on behalf of the central office team, the administrative staff. You have been a board who has been enormously supportive during a very difficult time. This pandemic has rewritten the rules. There are no guidelines for what we've accomplished. And you have been absolute supporters of the administration and our recommendations, and it is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Wait, there's no compensation? I just thought.
It just took you 20 years to figure that out.
I just thought that the invoice was a little behind, like 22 years.
No, no, it was direct deposit, Vicki. That's why you didn't realize it. They were direct depositing to you. Yes. For cookies, we work for cookies, which we made in honor of Matt. And speaking of Matt, Matt is going to be our first of our presentations this evening for our board member prohibited acts and school ethics training.
Good evening, everyone. Hey, just want to see if I know how to do this. Oh, I did. All right, good. Good evening, everyone. I'll go through the slides relatively quickly. The slides are at your seats. But this is the annual training dealing with school ethics. And I used to use a corny analogy, but I'm going to change it up a little bit because the analogy is a little outdated. When you think about a school board, think about a football game, an NFL football game. And when you're at the NFL football game, on the sidelines, there's coaches, there's the head coach, there's the defensive coach, you have the players on the field. And then up in the boxes, what do you have? You have the general manager, the recruiting manager, the owners. That's who you guys are. You're up in the box. You're setting the policy. You're financing the operation. And then you hire a guy who's your coach, or a gal who's your coach, and that's Dr. Valesky. And Dr. Valesky and his team of other coaches, Bernie Giuliano, and Joyce, and Lou, they're the defensive coaches, the offensive coaches. They make the calls. And then your teachers and your support staff, they're the players. They are playing the game. It's not for Board of Education members to get on the field and play the game. It's not for Board of Education members to get down into the trenches with the coaches and make the calls. Your job is to hire the best coach you can. And have that best coach make recommendations to you as a board to hire the best other administrators, the best teachers, the best custodians, the best bus drivers, et cetera. Because at the end of the day, the person that you hold accountable, the only person that the board can hold accountable for great success or failures is your head coach. And you see what happens with head coaches in the NFL. They're not winning, they're out. Well, you guys have a winning team right now, and it's because of your head coach. And I think you have to keep that analogy in mind when you're operating as a school board. Now, I'm not going to just keep, I'm not going to go through all the slides because you have, because I want to just talk to you about this analogy. When you are running an operation like a school board, and what you'll see in the law, there is the School Ethics Act, and then within it, there's a Code of Ethics. Now, basically, when you go through it, it tells you what you can and what you can't do, what you should and what you shouldn't do, and how folks get in trouble. There's some really simple ones. You can't take money from somebody in exchange for a promise. You can't use your office to influence a decision. So you can't go to say, "Dr. Valesky," and say, "Hey, listen, I need you to hire this person. This is my best friend's kid." You can't do that. You could say, "Hey, this is a good person. You interview him," but it's ultimately Dr. Valesky and his team's call. Where people get in trouble is when they try to, really, board members for the most part get in trouble, is when they start overstepping their bounds. The nine of you in this room have incredible power, and I've said this before. You guys have the, by far, the largest impact on the tax levy of the East Brunswick taxpayers. By far. Your budget dwarfs the municipality's budget. And why? Because you are educating 8,200 kids. You're employing well over 1,000 people. You're operating a multifaceted corporation with many buildings. So your job is to create the policies, which is basically the rulebooks of how the whole thing's going to be played out, how the game's going to be played. You finance the operations. You pass an annual budget. You go through the whole process of the finance team going through with the auditors and creating a budget. You pass it. And then you do very huge strategic planning, like talking about just before, these modular classrooms. Well, why are you doing that? Because strategically, you as a board have collectively decided that we have growth. How are we going to address it? And you're looking at even a greater thing, a bond referendum. That's the role of a board. The role of a board member is not to get involved in day-to-day operations. You're elected officials. People will contact you. That's okay. But what you're supposed to do is direct them to the appropriate administrator. If it's a local issue, dealing with, you know, somebody's child in a particular school, they should be directed to the principal of that school. If it's a more global issue, dealing with the district, with a COVID issue, with, you know, anything of, it could be district-wide, that individual then is directed to Dr. Valesky's office so it can be addressed. And what the School Ethic Act says is that board members shouldn't get involved in dealing with it. It should be directed to Dr. Valesky, and board members only get involved if administration is not adequately representing it at a board meeting. Because individually, you guys don't have power. When you come together, you have incredible power. And that incredible power is you are setting the policy. You are setting the, basically, the architectural roadmap for how this district is run on a day-to-day operation. And people don't understand truly how important policymaking is, because that's your fundamental goal. And in the terms of your operations as a school board, the most important thing you can do as a school board is to hire a good superintendent. That's probably the single most important thing a school board can do. Once you have a good superintendent, what are the other big items that you deal with? Well, of course, you deal with collective bargaining negotiations, year in and year out. You set an annual budget. But probably the single most important thing that really controls a school is its policies. And why? Those policies are the rules of engagement for your staff, for your students, for members of the public, for each of you, how you conduct these meetings, how you select committees. Everything is laid out in the policies. And the reason that that's so important is that it not only helps you as a board manage your affairs, it directs your superintendent and his administrative team and all of your staff of what the expectations are. It's the roadmap of how we operate a district. And you can go through the policies. There's policies on people's use of the internet, staff members' use of the internet. How should they use it? How should they conduct themselves? There's situations dealing with workplace harassment. There's situations with student truancy or student discipline or HIB. All that is contained in your policies. And the body that derives those policies and passes them are you. So you set the rules. And you can modify those policies, and there's a process. And that's why you have a policy committee. You come here, and if, look, at almost every board meeting, or every other board meeting, you're doing policies. Why? Because the law changes and you're updating. It's critical that you guys realize that that's by far the most important thing, because that's the rules of engagement for everybody that works here, attends here, visits here, those policies. Now, it's, I'm just going to talk about where I see board members getting in trouble. Understand that there's a couple different laws out there that board members have to be really keenly aware of. One of them is the Open Public Meeting Act, which is why we're here this evening, which requires at least 48 hours advance notice to the public that you're having a meeting. And a meeting occurs whenever there's a quorum. We are a nine-member board. If five of you are together, that's a quorum, because five of you can take action. And where board members get in trouble is through emails and texts. It's emails and texts. Because if you are having a conversation with five or more members via email or text, that constitutes a meeting under the Open Public Meetings Act, and it wasn't properly noticed. There's not a public comment session, which we'll get to later this evening. And if that occurs, there's an individual who's charged with investigating and dealing with violations of the Open Public Meeting Act, and it's an individual that none of us ever want to have to talk to. It's called the Middlesex County Prosecutor. So we don't want to go there. So what I've always said is, do not do group emails. If you're going to email and you have to get other people involved in it, use blind copy. Because if somebody hits "reply all," it doesn't go to five or more people. When people are engaging in a conversation, you have a problem. Now, when Dr. Valesky sends out like a blast to the whole board saying, "We're going to have to cancel this evening's meeting due to a snowstorm," that's not a communication. That's just notice to you. But if a conversation starts ensuing, that becomes a meeting. So what is the Open Public Meeting Act? Be mindful of it. Text messages are absolutely a mode of communication that people could get. And that brings me to the second law that you have to be mindful of, the Open Public Records Act. The Open Public Records Act is a law that mandates that any public record must be maintained by the public authority, and it's available for inspection based upon what's known as an Oprah request within seven business days of the requester's request. There's rules about it, but basically, the only thing requesters can't get are attorney-client privileged communication, student records, confidential personnel records, medical records. But can they get communications between board members? Yes, they can. Can they get text messages between board members? Yes, they can. Can they get Facebook posts that board members put up? Yes, they can. Can they, they can get all that. And where this becomes critically dangerous for boards of education, and I caution all of you, use only your EBNet email. Do not use your own personal email whatsoever. Why? Because the person who's responsible for responding to the requests is this very gifted young man, Bernardo Giuliano. He gets, his team gets hundreds of Oprah requests. And how do I know? Because I see some of them are very complex Oprah requests. But he gets them. And it's his job as the records custodian to find responsive records. He doesn't create records. He has to find the responsive records. Well, he doesn't have access to your private emails. He doesn't have access to your Gmail account or Yahoo account or your text messages. Doesn't have access to them. Doesn't have access to your Facebook. Doesn't have, he has access to EBNet. So he does a search. He can get the emails, and he can produce them. And if it's really involves student records or personnel, they're redacted, but they're produced. When people start having communications on private emails, over texts, over Facebook, whatever, they're not stored by your records custodian. And if they're touching on school business, that's considered a public record. So you're mandated to maintain public records. But the problem with Oprah is there's all these different means of communication out there. And the person charged with mandating or maintaining the records, Mr. Giuliano and his team, don't have access to all the different modes of communication. So you protect the district, you protect the board, and you help Bernardo Giuliano do his job. When you utilize that as your sole means of communication. And why? Because Oprah's got a really, very dangerous component in it that burns a lot of public entities. And what the law says is that if somebody makes a request for a document under Oprah, and you don't produce it, and they file a lawsuit, and as a result of that lawsuit being filed, it's called the catalyst theory. The lawsuit was the catalyst to the production of the document. And that happens, the public entity has to pay the attorney's fees. There's now a whole cadre of attorneys that make a lot of money doing just that. They do it, and they're very cute about it, and they figure out ways, and they find districts or municipalities that aren't doing it properly. And I'll just give you one horror story. It happened in a Middlesex County town, small town, little town, kind of over, I guess a little north of here. And there was an Oprah request. Now, you guys probably have all seen on the Asbury Park Press and I think you're in central Jersey. They have this thing called the Data Universe, where you could plug in, and you could look up any public employee and say, "Oh, that's what that person makes." Well, how did they get that? The Asbury Park Press, which is owned by Gannett, did Oprah requests. And Oprah requested Oprah requests, and they'd say, "We want all of your salaries. Give us your data." Well, they made an Oprah request in this small town. They said, "We want all of your salary information in an Excel spreadsheet or in a workable spreadsheet." And the town said, "No, no, no. We're not going to do that. Here's a PDF of our ADP payroll records." They said, "No, we don't want a PDF. We asked for it in a workable format." And this was litigated back and forth. And their position was, "We don't have that. ADP has that." Well, that's their contractor. Well, guess who won? Gannett. Guess how much the attorney's fees were? Over half a million dollars. That's what could happen here. I was involved in. I was involved in a case a number of years ago, where a board member, a school board member, it was a very, very, very controversial issue dealing with random testing of students, for to be involved in like athletics drug testing. And the school, it was very, the board was divided over, the community was divided over. This one board member was very vociferous about having this drug testing if you wanted to participate in sports, in extracurricular, et cetera. And she was engaging in emails, not only on the district email, but also on her private email, and doing things on Facebook, et cetera. And an Oprah request came in, and the Oprah quester asked for all emails of all board members, et cetera, et cetera. The records custodian went through the emails, got all the emails that there had, and over the course of this, produced tens of thousands of pages. The person filed suit, and unbeknownst to the records custodian, and unbeknownst to me, because I had to argue the case, the board member had an email and postings on Facebooks that she had created, that she didn't tell the records custodian about. But other people in the community knew about it and had produced it. So we got to court, they said, "Well, you didn't produce everything, because we have these 11 emails and postings." How could the record custodian get them? They don't have access to them. The judge found in favor of the quester. Now luckily, the judge didn't award the $75,000 of legal fees they wanted, only awarded $5,000 legal fees, because it was mostly complied with. But the issue there is, is that the records custodian had no knowledge of it. And so, from that point forward, in that district, because there are people who just would not use the district, the records custodian sends out a certification to every board member. Do you have any private emails? It makes the board members sign off on it, that they have nothing outside of the scope of the district, so that the records custodian is protected. And that's really important, because the records custodian, under the law, can be held individually liable for failure to comply with Oprah, and fined, and it can't be notified. So Mr. Giuliano would have to pay money out of his pocket, up to $1,000 of a violation. So, the reason I'm telling you this is that, and I think I've said this to you before, Ben Franklin had a great line. And that line is this, "Three people can keep a secret as long as two of them end up dead." If you write it, if you say it, if you post it, people out there have it. People take screenshots, even if you have, I was involved in a case with, I think it's called Snapchat, where you write it and then a few minutes later disappears. This person was doing really inappropriate things, an employee using Snapchat, and thought he was going to get away with it. Well, the person who was getting it was just taking screenshots of it and had every one of them. So there's no way, once it's written down, it's out there, and you can't take it back. So it's really, really important, as, because as a board member, you are charged with protecting the district. And the best way you can protect the district is confine yourselves to using your district email, making sure that you don't have a quorum whenever you're communicating, and protecting yourself. Because you know what? Ms. Becker just said it before. You guys are all volunteers, you don't get paid for this. You're spending an inordinate amount of time helping your residents and your kids and your district. You don't need to be involved in an ethics complaint, you don't need to be involved in having somebody contact your employer and say, produce emails that were done at your employer. Be a little bit selfish and protect yourself and your family and your privacy rights, and confine your board business to the official channels that are done here through the board. That'll go a long way to protecting you. Finally, and I've said this before to all of you, if there's a situation, there's nothing that's really that urgent, that you have to like, we're going to vote on it tonight. If you're worried about something, talk to Victor. Talk to Dr. Valeski. Why? He'll pick up the phone and ask me, we can give you guidance. Because the one thing the School Ethics Commission says is that if you get legal guidance, even if my guidance was incorrect, or I was wrong, it won't be, but even if that occurred, you as a board will get a pass. Because they'll say, "You know what? As a board member, you, you had the gumption, you had the foresight to ask the question." What they won't do is say, "You can't ask for a go free from jail card. If you did it, they won't give you an advisory opinion." If they're complicated issues, we can get advisory opinions. And one of the most complicated issues that we ever had happened right here at this board. You had a board member who was a referee for NJSIA sanctioned sports, gymnastics, swimming, et cetera. And this board member never involved herself in any East Bronzer competition, but the issue came up to her, she said, "Oh my goodness, I always get invited to the county meets. What if an East Bronzer kid is in the county finals of gymnastics, and I'm coaching the high bars, or refereeing the high bars, or I'm in a swim meet? What happens?" Well, I can assure you that there's no ethics opinion on that one. So he wrote, got an advisory opinion, and they said, "That's not a problem, you can do it." That's important. And be mindful, ethics opinions, I can't tell you right now, right now, we're defending ethics opinions, a number of them that have been filed by members of the public against board members. And are you indemnified for it? You are. The, the insurance company that the district has will provide you legal counsel to defend you in that. But it still costs the district's money, because you have a deductible. So the district has to pay the deductible of the legal fees to defend you in it. So if you have a question, if you're at all worried, just put the brakes on, ask a question, and we, I can give you some guidance on what you should and shouldn't do. And for the most, most issues, there's an answer to it. So that's what I would suggest that you guys do. I don't know if you have any questions or concerns, and if you want to ask me later, that's fine, too.
Does anybody have any questions?
Bernie, should I just leave your clicker here?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Bernie, so we're in our COVID-19 federal funding allocation, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to go over this COVID-19 federal funding report. As members of the board are aware, and also our community, there's been quite a bit of funding coming to states, municipalities, school districts, from the federal government as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. There've been questions, I think, curiosities about, you know, where is the money going? How are we utilizing the funds? And while the information has been contained within board meeting agendas, I think for members of the public in particular, this is a quick and easy way to get an idea of how those resources have been allocated and where they're being used. So, we've only got two slides. They're very basic, but I think they, they provide a good snapshot. This first one depicts the six sources of federal funding that we've received. There've been six individual areas. The first one that we received was the CARES Emergency Relief Fund. That was $584,000 roughly. We received Digital Divide Funds. That was $537,000. We received what was called the Coronavirus Relief Funds. That was $393,000. Then we received the CRRSA. Now, there were lots of acronyms that have been coming out of the federal government. So, the next one was the CRRSA ESER II. That was two, almost $2.4 million. We received under the ARP funds for IDEA, for special education, that was approximately $422,000. And the most recent source of funding was through the ARP ESER, which was $5.7 million. That application is still with the Department of Education. We recently submitted that application, we're waiting on final approvals. In total, the funds come out to just over $10 million. Now, where did these funds, where are these resources allocated to? So, the next slide provides a pie chart and how the various resources have been allocated. And a number of the federal funding sources have very specific requirements where we have been required to allocate funds in certain areas. In the technology area, the funds, some of the funds that I mentioned had to be utilized for technology, such as the Digital Divide that I mentioned earlier. There've been funds that have to be, that have had to be allocated to accelerated learning, toward credit recovery and enrichment for students, toward after-school tutoring. Those are some examples of where the funds, and they specifically tell us, this is how much you need to allocate toward these various activities. I'm going to go through, for purposes of everyone just listening here, where the highlights are in terms of the funding allocations. So, first off, the largest piece of the pie there is approximately $3.9 million. That's under the most recent source of funding that we're still waiting on final approval. That $3.9 million is allocated toward doing HVAC work at the high school for, I believe it's roughly 30 classrooms, if I recall correctly, needed work that has to be done. So, and that is one of the areas that the federal funds have been approved to be utilized to improve HVAC systems. We have approximately $1.6 million allocated towards staff for math and ESL, psychologists, special education instructional support. Next area, mental health services. And this also was one of those areas where there was a requirement that certain amount of money needed to be allocated here. And as you know, this has been a priority even pre-pandemic, putting resources into mental health services. Well, as a result of the federal funding, that has provided almost $1.6 million toward mental health services. Technology, I mentioned, there's approximately $1 million that has been allocated for technology. Accelerated learning, coaching, and educator support. And this is where the federal government has said, "We need to support our teachers." There's 700, a little over $713,000 that the federal government has said, "We need to invest in teachers to support them." For summer academy, the credit recovery program and enrichment for students, almost For out-of-district tuition, $382,000. And that's for the members of the public, that's out-of-district tuition for special needs students. For after-school tutoring and enrichment programs, $153,000. We acquired a school bus disinfecting system for all of our fleet, which will automatically disinfect the school buses. It doesn't require individuals to go through, as we were at the beginning of the pandemic, and spraying down the interior of the buses and wiping them down. It's an automatic system, they've all been fitted with it. That was over $96,000. Academic diagnostics to assist in assessing student needs, that was almost $35,000. Supporting OTPT services for special needs students, approximately $33,000. And then the last component is for non-public services, and this is where we have an obligation, the federal government says, "This particular amount of money is allocated toward non-public schools, we don't have any discretion on that." And that's almost $6,800, not very much. So when we take the total on that, we're at $10 million, $35,000, $361. That's where we are to date. Much of the funds have been expended. This most recent grant of funds is in process, which, as I mentioned earlier, it's the ARP ESER funds, which is $5.7 million. We're waiting on final approval for that, and we'll just continue to proceed with the programs and services that are required under these various funding sources. So, I hope that helps. There's a lot of information there, you, the board members have copies of the slides, lots of information. We may, I think we maybe can put this also up on the website for members of the public to easily reference. And if there are any additional resources that come our way, we'll certainly do another update, so folks have a better understanding of how the funds are being applied. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Do you have questions? Want to start, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Giuliano, for this. A question for you on some of the, some, a couple of questions on some of the numbers that you have here. Let's use example of mental health services. Is there anything that comes through on, on the agenda that earmarks a specific line item that, of something that we've done that applies back to this particular number that, can we match them up? Is there something that squares up a particular service or enhancement to the mental health services as it relates to the spending of, say, $1.5 million, or the budget of $1.5 million?
There'll, there'll be various components, but the one thing that comes immediately to mind is the services that we have through ESS. That is something that has been within our budget, and so, last year during the budget process, when we already knew we were having federal resources come in, that was reflected in the budget detail. So if you look in the budget documents, it reflected what portion of the mental health services that we contract with ESS, what portion of that was coming out of the federal resources? You'll see, as we go into this next budget cycle now, there's also going to be additional information, such as that being reflected, because this, this source of funds is continuing on into next year and is being allocated toward supporting ESS and the expansion of the services that we've been providing through them. One of the things I wanted to mention, which comes to mind as we're talking about this, is that one of the sources of funds specifically bridged two years. So it has a two-year period of time roughly to be able to be spent, and the budget that was created for that allocated those resources so that we had expenses covered for that two-year period. Mental health services being part, for the staffing I mentioned, that was being covered over a two-year period. That was also giving us some relief on the regular budget, because there were many requests for new positions that we just couldn't fill, but gave us some time to look at efficiencies, and while having the federal funds cover those costs to be able to provide the services to our students. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. And then, two smaller questions. First, and I think you touched on this with non-public schools, any of this gets shared with the charter schools?
No.
Okay. I, I thought that's what you had said. And lastly, is any of this relevant when it comes to the school lunch program that the students have?
No. None of these funds are attributable to the school lunch program. That is a separate program, and the federal government has been funding that fully.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lou?
So, for this P. number one, it was $5.7 million. So, we don't have the final approval yet. But on P. number two, looks like you are either spending, or you're budgeting to spend this money. If unfortunately, this $5.7 is not approved, so how can you fund this, your budget? Or where can you get the money for this? You're already trying to fund all those projects.
So let me say it very simply, it will be approved. So, the county office of education has already communicated back to us with anything that needed to be updated. The state department of education is doing the approvals. These are entitlements. It's not a competitive grant. So the district will receive the funds. It's a matter of whether the narratives are just the way they like them, whether we've checked off all the boxes that they want checked off, and we have done that. So, the department of education is just taking a long time to be able, you know, to get through and approve these grants. We've seen that, not only in terms of grant approvals, but in a whole host of areas where the, the normal process for almost anything is very much elongated. There's no doubt in my mind that we'll be getting final approvals. And as a matter of fact, what the department of education has said is, even if you don't And as a matter of fact, what the department of education has said is, even if you don't have the formal approval, start spending the money.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Barbara?
Thank you. Thank you for the overview, and it's felt clear for parents to see where the money is being spent. Couple small questions, just after-school tutoring, could you tell us more about what, who's that being offered to, or a little bit more about that?
Do you want to speak to that, Joyce?
In our RTI model in the schools, we're offering that to students who are eligible for the basic skills program, who are not meeting grade level expectations.
So for kids who have a need in a specific area to capture?
Correct.
Dr. Bowley, can you just explain, you said RTI, we're using the acronyms a lot. Can you explain what that means?
Response to intervention.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, it's good you mentioned that because...
Yeah, just for the community too. A lot of people don't know what RTI is.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm used to it, but it always helps when you experiment. It's good. So it's for kids who have, like, they fell behind for whatever reason. It's not only kids who have special needs, it may be kids who, due to the pandemic, may have fallen behind.
Yes.
It's not through the two...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And thank you. And then the other question is not related to that. The HVAC system, can you tell us a little bit more about what that money is and how that's going to be spent at the high school?
So as I mentioned, I believe it's approximately 30 classrooms that will receive rooftop units that will provide heating and air conditioning to those spaces. Those plans are in development. As soon as the plans have been completed, we'll be going out to bid and hopefully having a successful, you know, response from contractors that we can award the contract. So, and as soon as we receive that, we're going to start, you know, moving forward with the project.
And again, for people who might not be familiar with ventilation and stuff, RTUs, maybe you could explain...
RTU, I'm sorry, I'm using the acronym. And RTU is a rooftop unit.
Right.
So I apologize.
No, no, listen, I've learned some of these acronyms from reading all your...
We've got RTUs, rooftop units, we've got TCU's, which are temporary classroom units. We've got all kinds of things.
A lot of three-letter acronyms.
We might, perhaps we put a dictionary of the acronyms.
Yeah, we should have an acronym glossary here.
Okay, no, that's great. And I appreciate that. So at our high school, for those that aren't, you know, so familiar with RTUs, how is that going to be helpful for the air quality in the rooms?
I think we'll get, we'll have a balanced airflow and circulation and filtration with those systems, so they're going to be a big help. And those are specifically in rooms where we found that that need was particularly important.
Because I know some people have been concerned about HEPA filtration, will that be included in the RTU?
No, there's no HEPA filtration in that. And there's all kinds of reports with regard to HEPA and whether it works or not. But what I will say is that we've, with all of our systems, we've increased the MERV rating on the filters to the maximum extent that those systems will permit without compromising the system's integrity.
That makes sense. Yeah, it can only do what the system can do. And does this system have that MERV 13, or does it...
I don't know, I don't, I can't say at this moment. I just don't know that level specificity.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Anna?
One comment and one question. So just a comment on the RTUs is, I assume that, or maybe it becomes a question then, we will be putting in high-efficiency units that can take advantage of additional energy efficiency rebates?
We will most certainly be putting in high-efficiency units, yes.
Will that be a requirement in the RP that they're high efficiency?
Yes, absolutely.
And the utilization of rebates that come with it that will stretch this?
Yes.
The second question I have is along the lines of, $10 million is a lot of money, and certain things are one-time, like HVAC. That's one time, you get it done and it's done. Some of this is service level. And it's great that this funding is here because certainly the students need it because of the difficulty over the past, you know, year and a half. My concern is, and I don't know if there's an easy answer to this, is if the money goes away, and then I'd hate to see these services that we start up then suddenly drop off, like the tutoring, like the, you know, additional support from ESS. What can we do to just make sure there's not going to be a drop-off if the federal funding goes away next year? Because we only know what we know right now.
So that's certainly something that is on our mind, and as we're doing budget development, we're keeping that in the forefront of our minds to look at not just the immediate budget development process, but where does it take us, you know, two years from now and three years from now? With ESS, I mean, the federal funds have really provided us some relief with ESS because the plan was to really increase those services anyway. We were going to do that over several years. So it's enabled us to be able to expedite that a bit. So I think, you know, by the time we get to two years down the road and the funds for mental health services go away, I think we'll be in a comfortable place and not have a problem there. I mentioned the staffing earlier. Part of that was looking at efficiencies in staffing. So while we needed to provide staffing in the immediate sense, what are we doing, and this was the challenge that was put forth to administration, what are we doing and what can we do to mitigate this over the next two years so that we could bring those numbers down? So those are components that we've been actively looking at and working on. And I'm going to say, you know, Kelly Bonda's not here, but Kelly had been doing a tremendous job with that. And so kudos to her, and I'm sorry she's not here to hear that now, but I've told her privately...
We'll tell her to watch the meeting.
When she was here.
Yeah.
But she had really been doing a fantastic job in working toward that objective. So I was very comfortable with where we were heading in that regard. There are going to be certain things that I think are supposed to transition away that wouldn't be permanent, but that remains to be seen. We don't know what we don't know at this point.
Yeah, it's just something to watch out for and for the budget committee to keep in mind as we look forward each year, you know, with the uncertainty of the funding.
Mrs. Chu, I just wanted to share with you and the rest of the board that one of the things that has impacted us is our enterprise accounts. Our enterprise operations have essentially shut down during the pandemic. And we would typically move money from enterprise accounts into our general fund. Now, we're going to restart those, but this federal money helped us in that regard, that we didn't have that money coming in. We have a finite level of resource from taxation, from tax levy. We know that in this next year and future years, we're going to suffer inflationary cost for everything that we do. But we have to, we are exploring other enterprise opportunities to expand that footprint for the district so we can generate more revenue outside the district operations, roll into district operations. And I think we've always been, that's one thing I've been proud about East Brunswick, is we have this resource outside that serves the community, but then funnels money back in to fund our operation as well.
I did notice in today's agenda that the community, what's that one called, community programs is generating positive cash flow again, so that was good to see.
Yeah, Anne Marie Gilbert's been phenomenal, Joe Crotchell absolutely phenomenal in providing services to the community and actually offering the community à la carte services for summer camps and things like that that were tremendously received by the community. You didn't have to sign up for a week-long camp for your child, you selected one or two days, or pick the whole week if you wanted to. Very smart idea, credit to them.
That's great. Actually, oh, I'm just going to piggyback off, is that okay? I'm going to piggyback off Mrs. Anna for a second, because that was one of my questions. Because one of the things I looked at was a school bus disinfecting system for $96,000. That's a one-time cost.
One time.
So it's funny, because when I look at certain things about the pandemic, as one of the resident germaphobes, I'm thrilled something like that, that we now have that in place. But it made me think as well about some of the things, like when you talk about staff and efficiencies, I just, I don't want to see us in a position with Mrs. Chu, that I don't want to see us in a position to take on certain things. So I'm hoping that this is not going to be an issue down the road, that things that are beneficial are going to lose financing and then be an issue. But that was my, my $96,000, I thank you for all the children on the bus. Sorry about that, Mark. Go ahead.
No, please. Since we're on acronyms, I just wanted to tell everybody about our VGBA. That's our very good business administrator. I always like to add humor when I can, but in all seriousness, Mr. Juliana, you stand up there and you answer questions off the cuff, and you have all this stuff in your brain, and it's not made up, it's fact-based. And I'm just, you know, I just wanted to say, I mean, with $10 million here, $172 million budget there, I'm impressed, you know? And I want to thank you. I sleep well at night knowing, you know, seriously, that, you know, this much stuff is in your hands, you're not, you know, I can't say enough about it. So that's all I got is my comment.
I appreciate your remarks, thank you. And your statement of sleeping well at night, that's something that the superintendent says.
I'm not sleeping well these days, but it's not because of you.
Well, it's not because of finance.
Yeah, it's not because of you, it's something called COVID.
And to tie that into Matt's presentation, as our records keeper, it means that we all have to make sure that we're listening to the ethics and not putting Mr. Juliana in that position where he doesn't have all of the records in-house because we're using our personal accounts. Anyone else?
Just one follow-up to something Dr. Valeski said. So I understand that you don't have the funding source, resource of facilities at this point, of the services. So with that said, do any of these items that now we did get funding for replace what we had already budgeted for? And now that this funding has come in, it's going to fund that need, which would ultimately result in us not spending something that was prior budgeted for? I'm trying to connect this, because there's only three dots here.
I understand.
Yeah. And would that bring money back in that we had essentially allocated not knowing about this additional funding? Was that clear?
Yeah, I think so. So let me try, let me try an answer on that, that, based on what I'm understanding the question to be. So with the round of funding that we had that came in during our budget development process last year, that funding could be used over a period of two, maybe a little more than two years. We took that into account, and some of that provided relief to balance the budget. The immediate area that comes to my mind is in summer academy. Now, summer academy is not a huge cost item, but it helped us. It helped us to be able to continue to provide that service without having to look at what would potentially be, you know, semi-Draconian cuts. Now, the reason for having to look for that offset was, according to what Dr. Valeski said, and absolutely accurate, our enterprises were done. I mean, we had tapped out those resources and not having those resources recover because we weren't providing the kind of community programs, services, and facility use rentals as we had been, we needed to be able to bridge that gap. Keep in mind that our enterprise systems provide well over a million dollars to the general fund budget. So that was a big, a big amount to try to bridge. So that was one area. I think there might have been a little bit in technology, but right off the top of my head, I don't recall. But I don't, I don't see where we're going to have that issue, at least not at this moment where we're going to have that issue going forward. I don't see that as being something that is going to be bridging the gap so much for year two, although, I'm sorry, for year two, going into this next budget year, I think summer academy will be part of that again. I think we did that over two years. So that by '23, '24, the next budget year after, well, we're in the development for now, we will have to then reintroduce that. But by that point, you know, we should hopefully have our enterprises functioning, you know, at full throttle again. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Juliana.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we are up to our Start Strong assessment results. Dr. Bowley?
Tonight, I'm happy to share our Start Strong assessment data results with you. So to provide context for the data, if you could just please take a moment and read this quote from the New Jersey Department of Education. Okay. In the fall, we administered the Start Strong assessment, which satisfied the New Jersey federal requirement under the Every Student Succeeds Act to administer general assessments in English, Language Arts, Math, Science for the 2020-2021 school year. However, the New Jersey Department of Education has cautioned us that Start Strong is not comparable to NJSLA and has discouraged districts from comparing the performance from past SLA administrations to the Start Strong data. So here you see the scoring specifications. At the top, you can see the Start Strong scored students based on three support levels, which is indicative of the test's design purpose. Level one, strong support may be needed. Level two, some support may be needed. Level three, less support may be needed. The support levels indicate where students may need more or less support meeting academic standards. At the bottom of the slide, you can see the SLA uses a five-level performance band, which is not comparable to the Start Strong assessment. Specifications: The Start Strong consisted of one 60-minute unit in each subject area. Students in grades four through 10 participated in the English Language Arts exam. Students in grades four through eight, plus students enrolled in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, participated in the math exam. And science was administered to students in grades six, nine, and 12. The name of the exam that the students took reflected the grade and/or the subject that the student is currently enrolled in when they took the Start Strong assessment this fall. But the test content was reflective of last year's standards. The tested grades were advanced one year to test the same cohort of students who would have tested last spring. So for example, in science, students are typically tested in grades five, eight, and 11. So Start Strong tested students who had advanced one year and are now currently in grades six, nine, and 12 at the time of testing. East Brunswick's participation rate for the Start Strong was 96%. The remaining 4% would include students who were either absent or who were exempt because they participated in the DLM alternate assessment last spring. And additionally, ESL students who have been in the United States less than one year for the prior school year are exempt from taking the ELA exam. This slide shows some considerations for reviewing the assessment results. The New Jersey Office of Assessments presented statewide New Jersey Start Strong results at the January 5th State Board of Education meeting. The DOE noted the following observations about the results, which are consistent with pandemic-related learning loss nationally. Unfinished learning may be greater in math than in reading. Unfinished learning may be greater for elementary students than for older students. And for historically underserved populations, gaps continue to persist. For our English Language Arts overview, on a whole, East Brunswick ELA scores are consistent across the grade levels, with 62% of students overall scoring in the highest of the three performance levels. The statewide... The statewide average shows a level-three performance gap of 18% between grades four and grades 10. Our performance is more evenly distributed, with the largest level-three performance gap shown between fourth and fifth grade. Of particular note is our ninth-grade ELA performance, with 72% of the students scoring in the highest of the three performance indicators. In all grades, East Brunswick scores are better than the state average. This chart shows the average ELA support level distribution by school. Individual differences between schools may be attributed to a variety of factors, but all of our elementary schools, around three-quarters of students achieved a level-two or three. Students who are struggling have access to intervention tools and strategies, including additional support through our Basic Skills Program. The Department of Ed has provided support level data aggregated by subgroups, including race and ethnicity. These results mirror observations made at the state and national level with regard to historically underserved populations. East Brunswick strives to make quality instruction both accessible and equitable for all of our students. These charts show additional subgroup support levels for students with disabilities and 504 plans, economically disadvantaged students, students currently and formerly enrolled in ESL, and by gender. The results show a dramatic increase in achievement for students who have exited ESL as compared to students still receiving ESL instruction. Our ESL program focuses intensively on literacy. The results from Start Strong show that former English language learners are close to their native English peers in ELA performance. Onto math. This is the math overview of the Start Strong performance. The math exam tested students on the prior-year knowledge. For Algebra I, the state determined prior-year content to be, quote, "grade-eight", specifically those standards relevant to algebraic concepts, end quote. Students taking Algebra I in seventh or eighth grade may not have been exposed to some of the math content at the time they took the Start Strong exam, and this may account for the unusually low scores in Algebra I and appears to be have, to be the case statewide as well. Next, we have a chart that shows the math support levels by school. Although the math scores were lower in general, there's also less variability between our schools. The lower overall scores reflect the statewide trends observed by the DOE with regard to pandemic-related learning losses. Our search for a new math program is related to our need to address learning losses, provide differentiated instruction to historically underserved populations, and provide direct assistance to students with disabilities and our English language learners. This chart shows subgroup support levels in math by race and ethnicity. And the next slide has charts that show our subgroup support levels for math provided by the Start Strong data reports. Again, there is a striking improvement by students who have exited the ESL program. Also, performance by gender shows female and male students performing similarly in both math and ELA. And as noted previously, strong support is needed for students who are economically disadvantaged and are students with disabilities, both which may have been disproportionately impacted by pandemic-related learning interruptions. Onto science. This is the overview of our science results, which were given in only three grade levels, six, nine, and 12. NJSLA is administered in grades five, eight, and 11. So the Start Strong was advanced forward one grade to ensure that the same cohort of students was tested. Our students exceeded the statewide average in science, particularly in high school. Our 12th graders in Level III outperformed the state by 24 percentage points. Moving on, the chart next on the next slide shows the subgroup data by race and ethnicity. Not all of the racial and ethnic groups are shown here. The NJDOE has mandated that subgroup populations that total fewer than 10 students must be suppressed for student confidentiality. So therefore, the subgroups of American Indian and Alaskan Native and the Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander categories have been suppressed from this chart. These charts show the science support level percentages by subgroups, as with ELA and math. Students exiting our ESL program are well-positioned to achieve in a similar range to their peers, which demonstrates the strength and success of our ESL program. The results for science show that our students with disabilities and students who are economically disadvantaged need additional support in all academic areas. Start Strong provided our teachers and specialists and administrators with immediate and actionable data in the form of several reports and data on demand after the close of testing. Although Start Strong is only one assessment used to determine a student's need for intervention, teachers and specialists are provided with a robust set of tools and strategies, as you can see in this slide, to assist students who are struggling. Although the pandemic has clearly caused learning loss for students in East Brunswick, across New Jersey, and throughout the country, our teachers and specialists are working intensively to bridge the gap and help all students reach grade-level standards. Thank you. Questions?
So, you know, I was doing really well with all of our acronyms until I got to LLI kits when I was reading this earlier. And I said, should I know this?
Level Literacy Intervention.
Ah, thank you. The only thing I wanted to ask was, and I know you mentioned algebra, my only concern was we seem to, which is great, be above the state averages, except the one glaring exception was grade-seven content in math. 62% of our kids fell into that level-one percent, as opposed to 47% in the state. Was there some reason for that particular year in our math program?
The Algebra I?
No, not Algebra I, the grade-seven content. The Math VIII, the 37 students.
Right, so that's why it's tricky, because Algebra I isn't aligned to a grade level. So the state...
Can I just interject?
Yeah.
So there's a very small population, I think it's 37 students who took that assessment. So those are 37, most commonly special education students who are off-grade level with their academics. They are taking a Math E course, which doesn't exist for general education students.
Okay, so the majority of our 7th grade students.
The Math VIII that has the N37 next to it?
Yeah, okay, because that's just that number, okay, that makes more sense now then.
And just to speak to the Algebra I, the state is assuming that Algebra I is being given in ninth grade, but most of our eighth graders are taking Algebra I. So because research shows that the earlier you provide students with Algebra I, the more performance there will be long-term in mathematics. And also the trajectory, to have calculus as a senior, you're going to need to take Algebra I in eighth grade. So therefore, these are most of our eighth graders taking this assessment, and the state is assuming it's for the ninth graders. So if you look at the eighth graders taking the test and the ninth graders who are now in geometry, who did have Algebra I last year, they did better. They both took the same test this year, which was based on algebraic concepts.
I knew there had to be something, but you're the expert. Does anyone else have questions for us? Yes, this is the last slide.
I have a few. What is IXL?
It's a math diagnostic and remediation online program.
I had a question about the intervention tools and strategies that we use. LLI is English, and Organ Gillingham Training is English-based, and differentiation during literacy periods is English-based, and I-reading, I believe, is also English-based?
Both, English and math.
Is it also both?
Yes.
I didn't have any experience with it for math. I feel like the list of intervention, the other ones are obviously able to be split that are there. I feel like our list of intervention tools and strategies is strongly English-based. If our scores indicate, we need math.
Absolutely. We have been seeking an intervention program, and we just approved, at the two board meetings ago, the success maker to pilot that with our math specialists. So we're bringing that onboard and we hope to roll that out.
My other questions were, the numbers for the math subgroups, the numbers for like the Hispanic population, which is 455 is a pretty substantial number to be looking at, and that's a very, those numbers are striking. I wanted to, does that population overlap at all with our ELL students, or is this separated?
I'm sorry, where are you? You're looking at ELL students in math compared to...
It's on this chart, Dr. Bowley.
Okay.
On the math.
Yes.
In the center of the page, the...
By race and ethnicity?
Yeah.
Are any of these students represented...
Is that an overlap between race, ethnicity? Is there any overlap between our race, ethnicity subgroups and our ELL population?
Are any of these students here represented Ls? Probably. Yeah, I don't have that information with me.
Okay. My other question was, in looking at the schools and the scores, especially by the elementary schools, I know that we traditionally are very careful to spread the resources evenly amongst the elementary schools, but our scores aren't indicating that that's really what we should be doing.
That's right.
Are we providing more intervention to the schools that have more students that need, or are we still spreading the same...
We are, we are differentiating the support for each building based on student academic data needs. And just to note also, there's been quite a few, maybe over a couple hundred, new students in the district who weren't with us last year. They tested with us in the fall, but we can't speak to what their educational programming was last year. So catching them up and closing learning gaps is high priority. But yes, we are differentiating based on the needs of the buildings.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson.
Dr. Bowley, thank you for this. You know me, I love data, and you gave me what I want. So my takeaways from this is that it's a positive report in many respects. I think that's a testament to the teaching style and delivery that's created, good recall and comprehension, even in light of the current environment. So I did take that. Looking on the other side, where the deficiencies, lack of a better word, are occurring, and I do see the intervention tools and strategies, now I'd like to know, is there a follow-up to this at some later date based on the intervention activities that would allow us to be able to measure the effectiveness?
We'll be taking the SLA in the spring.
And is that going to be the basis, although this states not to use it as a comparison?
I mean, I don't know that we'll compare it to this, but we'll certainly see growth if students are close to meeting grade-level expectations. And here they present it as needing strong support, I guess we can determine that they've learned a lot, that they've caught up to grade-level expectations come spring.
And I request that, and I appreciate that, that's good. And my request then is, when we do present the results of that, I would like to bring this report back.
Great.
Just to use it as a comparable. It's a concern, even with that percentage, that I'd like to catch those students up to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Again, thank you for all the information. It was very helpful. Two things, is it hard for us as a district really to use this information when you can't? I mean, it does help in some respects to see where they're at. We can't compare it to the previous examination that they took.
You know, it's one snapshot for the teachers to use. The teachers are in the classroom with the students every day. We just recently received this, although it was administered in the beginning of the school year. So...
So things have changed even since then?
Correct, correct. But it is a snapshot, and it is data, and we do take it under advisement, yes.
And then the other question is, I know we have some wonderful math and reading specialists in the district. Is they, are they part of this plan that may be increasing when the funding allows for the federal government or what have you, to have more math specialists coming around helping?
Yes, that is definitely part of the plan. And as you asked, Mr. Juliana, about the sustainability of the funding, we do use title funds also to support the different needs of the buildings. So some buildings have different staffing configurations than other buildings who require less support.
Yeah, maybe, maybe as the time goes by, we get that funding, you could tell us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
And Dr. Bowley, this assessment was really one of the first standardized assessments our students have taken in quite a while.
That's right.
And so there has, there is, obviously, you know, this is their first touch on this in a very long time.
And in the building too, in person, it said that it has a...
Welcome back.
Yeah, the 60-second blocks, yeah.
Welcome back, there's a test.
Yeah.
Okay, Leo?
So, Dr. Bowley, I started your slides Monday afternoon. To be honest with you, I couldn't sleep well for three nights. I checked out with the state New Jersey Assessment Resource Center. The Level I is described as knowing only minimal understanding of the concept of the contents. Level II is only understand partial of the required concept and the practice. So I checked the data. For the language, one in five students ended up in Level I. In math, one in three students, Level I. In science, one in four students is East Brunswick. I'm not happy for this result. So we are, just so large percentage of our students are only getting minimal understanding of the target, the material, the concept we're trying to teach. And a similar percentage of those students only got partial understanding, the concept and the material. So, you know, I'm not happy. So I couldn't sleep well. So I need you guys to give me a peaceful mind, how can we improve this? Or give me a reasonable explanation why this number is this ugly?
Well, Mr. Hung, I don't know, then I'll give you a peaceful mind, but I will let you know where I come from, from my perspective, not only as a superintendent, but as a parent, because my son took this assessment at school. And it was early in the year, and you know, this is a very, this was a very different assessment than the NJSLA. And these were 60-second blocks that where students came in and they, you know, were asked to demonstrate their understanding. We cannot measure, given the fact that students have not taken a standardized assessment for quite a while, what their, how they embrace the assessment, if they took it seriously or not. I think the more accurate measure for us is looking at our NJSLA data. And I don't think we're going to have reliable and valid data to compare until we get into next year, because this is just a very, very brief snapshot that I fear may create a lot of anxiety. But it's certainly a measure for us to pay attention to. But I think I would caution anybody to make assessments or make judgments about our students based on just this. I think that we get to spring of next year and compare this year to next year, I think is a more reliable measure in a post-pandemic environment. I think it's just going to take some time to assess where our actual student needs are. But I think we have a general scope of where the needs are, but it's going to be more refined. Does that make more sense?
And Mr. Hung, I would just add on that this is the first time this test was ever administered, the scoring metrics of it, and even the qualifiers, you know, strong support may be needed. the scoring metrics of it, and even the qualifiers, you know, strong support may be needed, may not be needed. So, and to tell you anecdotally that our teachers are reporting tremendous growth. What these students are demonstrating back in the beginning of the year is not aligned with what they're doing in class today.
If it helps, Lee Wu, for you to sleep at night, the one thing that I found positive, other than the one that I brought up that you explained, was the fact that we are better than the state averages. So it tells you that everyone is going through this, but our teachers and our students are doing a little bit better, thankfully. If that helps you sleep at night.
My point is, is East Brunswick. Our bar, our target is not the average of state of New Jersey.
Right.
We should be much higher than this average, right? So I'm always a positive guy. I always support Dr. Valeski, Dr. Bowley. I'm always support, but I feel the responsibility to prepare our students ready. When they leave East Brunswick Park School, you know, I hope they feel comfortable. I hope they have enough competitive ability for their life. And I understand this is a first task of this kind, but the number means something. You know, if Level 1 and Level 2 together, the percentage is way too high. You know, just as my opinion, I understand everyone got different approach of the same issue. But, but my next question is, for those intervention tools, is free of charge for all students who have this need?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
Dr. Valeski, you mentioned that this test was given early in the year, September?
Correct.
Okay. So, Lee Wu, these kids are taking this test after, I think we can agree, two extraordinary years outside the realm of our usual expectation of classment, classroom enrichment, and enhancement and achievement, right? And I think the key word for me was what Dr. Valeski used. It was a snapshot. There was actually, years ago, there was this study done on the SATs. And it broke down scores on a given weekend, not necessarily by the test results, but the kids were asked to do a kind of assessment, a social, emotional, and physical health assessment. There were kids who came to take the SATs, they were sick. Some had a fever, some had a cold. There were kids who had just broken up with a girlfriend or a boyfriend. And they took that same group of kids. And a month later, they retested them and did that same set of assessments. And what they found was there were kids who got completely different scores. Let's say the first month, there was a child who came who was sick, but came to take the test. A month later, they weren't sick, their test score was higher. There were kids who suffered some emotional trauma the first month they took it. They came to take it the second month. They had already had a month of dealing with emotional trauma, their test scores were higher. And the whole point was, and it was very critical of the role of standardized tests to begin with, which is another subject to debate. It's a snapshot of a given moment in time, a specific day. It doesn't necessarily take into account of what happened to that child, what that child was going through an hour before they took a test, five minutes before they took a test, the day before they took the test. So I think we always have to play standardized test results against that kind of environment and culture. But particularly in September, after coming back from two extraordinary years. So I think, Lee Wu, you should take comfort in the fact that this was a snapshot that should not have been taken in September and perhaps not at all.
So, Vicky, I'm not trying to argue with you, okay? And when you look at the participants' number, for the math, we had 4,370. For the language, we have 4,354. For science, we have over 2,000 positive students joining. I was a scientist. When the sample pool is more than 1,000, it's kind of very reliable. It's not, I agree with it. Certain students may break up with his girlfriend, break up with her boyfriend. This is small number. But when you look at the sample pool, more than 4,000, which really means something. I hope I'm wrong. If somebody says, Lee Wu, you must be wrong, then I will sleep well tonight.
I wasn't, my friend, I would never, ever, ever infer you were wrong. I was just encouraging you to, I could see how passionately this affected you and how upset you were by it because of how much you care. I, in my own way, wanted to urge you to put it in the perspective of the immediate and very viable culture this test was played out against. That's all. Again, I would never, ever try and infer that you were wrong. It's, there's not a right or wrong.
You care and that's wonderful. I'm going to move on if that's okay? Mrs. Gloss has a question, Mr. Corangelo?
I just wanted to speak to, I'm always interested, maybe a different kind of data than Jeff, but I am always very interested in test scores and assessments. But my question about these results, I was interested in what we're doing to remediate. What are we offering to the students coming back in? The numbers and where populations, certain populations stand out so differently from the rest of our population? But the other part of my perspective is, I was in the rooms where this was given, not here, but elsewhere. But I was in these rooms. And I'm a big believer in looking at testing to decide if it has any validity. Is it testing what it purports to test? I, first off, I would just like to say, I'm a huge fan of East Brunswick. I'm not always a fan of the way the state rolls things out and I've never seen testing rolled out the way this testing was rolled out. It was bizarrely different for a veteran teacher, so I can't imagine what it was like for a full staff to try to. It was just my own personal experience. And it was, it was given at a time that felt, from within the walls of a school, highly inappropriate. Because here were the things that students elsewhere were talking about coming out of this testing. They were talking about that they were uncomfortable being in rooms with that many people still. And that was all of them. And they were uncomfortable because they weren't used to the buildings they were in and they were lost. The number of students that showed up panicked to test near me, who were lost. Because it was too early in the school year and they hadn't been in that building previously. And just, I really felt like as I was watching these students test, that I was unclear as to what these results were going to tell us about them. I didn't think it was going to tell us too much about their skills. It was going to tell us a lot about how much resilience they could muster under some really bizarre circumstances. Because that's what it felt like. It's, I've given the NJSLA, I've given the park, I've given the HESPA. I can date myself and go back further and further. I've given the SATs. And I will never give the SATs again, it just seems awful to sit there. But I've done these tests before, but I've never been in a room with students who were so panicked before they ever saw the test. They were not used to being in buildings with crowded halls. They were not used to even finding their way. So I am interested in the results, you know, if there's one group that's standing out from another group. Like, I do question why some of our subgroups still stand out. They should not. Or why one school seemed so different than the others. But as far as like what these levels mean, I don't know that this test measured what it purported to measure in the first place. I just know that I was very, very glad when it was over. And I spent a lot of time talking to my own personal children about to not worry about this at all. Because I didn't think as a parent that this measured much about them, except their resilience under pressure.
Did you have a question for Dr. Bowley or no? Just a comment?
Just a comment.
Mr. Corangelo, Mrs. Chu.
Heather, thank you.
Just before you start though, do you guys have questions for Dr. Bowley? Because if it's a discussion, that's fine, but I would let her sit down.
I do have a question. Maybe for the group. But I wanted to tell Heather, thank you for that insight on to, you know, what is the rationale for doing this test in September? Why was it even given? When we knew all these things that Heather was, you know, saying.
Provided this opportunity for districts to understand learning loss from the pandemic so that we could, we could use this data to inform our instruction and also to satisfy that federal requirement for the standardized testing from last school year.
So it was in September, almost as an experiment to see like how resilient they were?
I mean, it's kind of. I don't know about calling it an experiment, but this is the first time a test like this has been given.
Right.
How valid the results are.
And a lot of districts don't have the data that we carry for our students and don't analyze the data that we do consistently outside of standardized testing to measure our students. And, Mr. Hung, I just thought of something that maybe will give you some comfort. There are a lot of variables here. As a scientist, you understand the importance of variables. And there are many variables for all of our students, for all of our teachers, for the community in large. You have been in classrooms this year. You have witnessed East Brunswick teachers in their element and you have reported out how impressed you were. That is the standard. Our teachers are phenomenal. They've had to adjust under circumstances that no one could have predicted, that no one could have written the playbook for. And then in a given day, a certain number of their students are in quarantine instruction or, you know, in our, if they chose hybrid, those students might have been learning from some other location, far remote from East Brunswick. So there, I think the comfort comes in the professional teaching staff we have in East Brunswick and the observations in the classrooms that students, when they're in the classrooms, are responding and they're recovering, they're learning, they're getting back up to speed. And it bothers me as a superintendent to have to make a decision that we're going to close our schools again for two more weeks because a variant has taken over our community and we have to do that. Because I know the impact that has just for two weeks. But I'm confident that our professional teaching staff is going to rise once again to the challenge, whatever we do. And that's why I say, looking at the NJSLA, year to year, to me, is a more reasonable assessment than using this measure to make an assessment.
And, Mr. Hung, as for myself, my department, and the building administrators, we are 1,000% committed to helping close every learning gap for every student in this district.
I always have faith in you guys. But I'm not trying to blame anyone for this result. I just want to know how we can improve, how can we provide our students better education? That is my point. I'm not pointing finger to anyone. I know you guys are working very hard and I believe I observe more classes than all other board members. I know how hard our teachers are working there. I know how strong our students were. But, you know, we just need, this is a fairly alarming signs, red flag. So we need to try to improve ourselves. That is my point.
As we are, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chu.
One question and then one comment. So this test was mandatory, right?
Yes.
So it wasn't optional that you could not choose not to do it? So it was very helpful, but listening to all the questions and the comments and the answers here. And kind of my way of wrapping my head around it is, it was presented at the wrong time, but that's not our choice. We have to roll it out. That said, I wasn't shocked at the outcomes, right? Kids coming back, the older disruptions. You know, so I wasn't shocked. And I think this is a national problem. And I think as, as Mr. Hung pointed out and everybody else here is, the focus is on, you know, getting kids back to where they need to be. And, you know, that's what it's about. It's what we're doing with the $10 million. It's what we're doing with the extra supports. You know, Heather's observation that, you know, we need to maybe look at more math supports because of, you know, the deltas in math seem to be higher than English. Let's use the data then, you know? Even if it was done at the wrong time, it's still directional. Looking at data as directional and using that to, you know, to increase the supports in the right way. How do we allocate our resources and our funding to focus on the biggest gaps? And let's get our kids back to where they need to be. And, you know, that's, I'm sure that's what everybody is working on. But it's not surprising, right? You know, the kids have had some tremendous challenges in the past, what, almost two years?
Yes, and it'll take time to recover, but we will.
Hi.
Mr. Mark.
We can't assume this is a valid assessment. Sorry, I call it like I see it. This comes out of the blue. And I've been in a ton of classrooms. I was in Hammer Schulz for five years in the 90s. I did eight years in the elementary schools. I've seen East Brunswick teachers before, during, and it's going to be after COVID. You know, we can't, this is my opinion. We can't assume this is a valid assessment. When I see high graduation rates, when I see the colleges these students are getting into, you know, even when I talk to the students, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not hanging my hat on anything from this. Yes, I do agree, we kind of knew we needed some tweaking in math before that. So this kind of gave us a, like a global, general kind of, yeah, but we knew that. So that kind of confirmed that, just, you know, on a global level there with the whole school system. But getting into the weeds with the numbers and stuff, in my opinion, I'm not, I'm not putting anything on this. My faith is in the staff. And I'm confident, so, and I love your passion. I love your passion, you know? But I'm not betting on New Jersey starts strong numbers. I'm betting on the teachers in this district and the administrator.
Absolutely.
Go Bears!
Thank you, Dr. Bowley.
Thank you.
So now, Ms. Nora. No offense to anyone else, but the best presentation of the evening.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So we had, I mixed up my dates again, I meant to check. But we had a chorus concert since the last meeting. The, I didn't go, but I did see some videos and they did very fantastic, wonderful singers and the orchestra players that joined them. And then I don't have very many events to cover, but I did want to talk about how fantastic the teachers have done with getting us through the two virtual weeks and the past two years and back in person. That's been a seamless transition. Everyone is exhausted and just sick of everything changing, but we're back in person and it's going super well. We have a Decision Day event confirmed for May 1st. That's getting set up as acceptances are starting to come back to seniors. We're getting towards the finish line of that senior year, myself included. Dr. Figaro did mention, I'm wearing my red for Rutgers tonight because I got accepted last week. Thank you. And then we have midterms coming up in the next week and two, week or two. And teachers are adjusting those midterms if the virtual learning impacted their curriculum at all to make sure that their students are prepared and confident in going into these exams. And students are preparing and studying and going to do fantastic and get right through the next semester.
I have no doubt.
Good.
Thank you. You were worth the wait. So this brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students in. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrator's staff. The participant is limited to three minutes duration. The lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. It doesn't look like it, but is there anyone wishing to address the board tonight? Oh, yay, doctors and Vicky!
Good evening, everyone. So, Matt, I loved your analogy, right, with the football analogy. My heart is still bleeding as the Pittsburgh Steelers lost on Sunday. But I love the analogy. So coming from your analogy and being a part of it, I'm going to say, I'm coming to you tonight from the Players Association, right? So the East Brunswick, East Brunswick Education Association would like to give our heartfelt thanks on this Board of Education Celebration Month, Appreciation Month, to all of you for your public service, your commitment in good times and in bad, to our entire East Brunswick community. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for our popcorn.
Mr. Lacks, can I say, real quick, thank you for the note? Although, although a little bit corny, figuring with your team here.
Not at all. On the Pinterest jumping, it was great.
Thank you.
That was great. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Okay, we'll see.
I knew it, like, you're a Steelers fan.
That's okay, I'm going to call him Bill Belichick right now, so. I know a lot of people will hate me for this. I know, I know, I can't help it. I can't help it. I'm going to close the public portion, and we're going to move on to our Board of Education items. Does anyone have an interest in moving the entire agenda? Or would you prefer that we go through? Yes?
So moved.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Motion to move the entire agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any discussion then on any of the items listed tonight, Mr.?
Yes, real quick. The Fairview trip, I thought it was excellent that there was a fee waiver for the parents. You know, I've been on these Fairview trips, as many of the board members have, and it's a wonderful trip. I was sad that it had to be canceled because of COVID. If we can do this gesture and it fits in the budget, which obviously we can, thank you, Dr. Valesky and everybody involved in Fairview. It's a little bit like that. I always talk about a little breaks if we can do it for staff, for parents, whatever. So I just wanted to say, bravo, thank you, it's, you know.
And I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Higgins, who supervised or science and orchestrated it, and Dr. Bowley. And, you know, this, this is, still, the students will get the experience, you know, be it one day. But given the fact that we would not want students camping overnight together, I think this is the best scenario, given the circumstances.
Very true. Yeah, I just, I was going to add something about that also. When we survey classes that have graduated, and we ask them, what were some of your most memorable experiences that really shaped you in East Brunswick? I think it's fair to say that Fairview comes up in almost every, every child. And I'm, those of you who have grown up in East Brunswick, did?
Stokes. Arlen to Stokes.
Did you go to, okay. So it's fair to say it's a long-held tradition. It's been going on for decades.
Except we got, we had yellow buses. When we went up to Stokes for that long drive, remember, we had the crappy buses.
So, so the fact that we're...
They drive in fancy buses now.
The fact that we're doing it just for the day, as Mark said, is fantastic.
I'm sad that there's going to be multiple classes of kids that are not going to be able to answer that when we ask them for their...
Well, but I think that this is a valiant effort, and that I want to give a real big shout out to the, the science teachers, who, and the, the other subject teachers also, but the teachers who are going to really be putting together this curriculum. I know that they're going to do everything they can to make this day incredibly memorable. And I also wanted to say that I think it's, it's great that we can do the parent paid fee waiver.
Is there any other discussion on the agenda itself? Okay, then, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Tchikich, please pull the roll.
Mrs. Becker.
Yep.
Mr. Carangelo.
Yep.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hung.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, this brings us to new and old business, committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Anyone have anything? Look at that, very quiet. Okay, well, we do have a need for closed session, where the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. These subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act. The Board of Education intends to discuss the matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and may take action. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Becker, seconded by Mr. Carangelo. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The same? Motion carried. Thank you so much.